Good morning. It is Thursday, September 5th. The time is 11:07 a.m. We call the briefing meeting to order. First on the agenda is Lamar advertising. Our presenters are many. I see Mr. Mazurkowitz, Mr. Bolter, and I'm so sorry.
Benjamin Henry.
Mr. Henry. First of all, I want to extend my sincere apologies for starting late. And let's jump right in.
Thank you. Board members, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Attorney, thank you so much. I'm Joe Mazurkowitz, President, BGM Consulting, here this morning in my role as government relations for Lamar in the South Florida region, with me, as you identified, is Ed Bolter, General Manager for South Florida for Lamar South Florida, and Ben Henry, who has the real estate division for Lamar South Florida. We have been working with your staff, we being Lamar, working with your staff based on pretty much a successful process we developed initially with the City of Cape Coral that goes all the way back to the year 2005 in trying to determine and build a reoccurring, unrestricted general revenue stream for local government that totally within the control of that local governing board. We propose to do this through a private-public partnership with the district by installing digital electronic messaging centers on school board properties. Lamar is proposing either to do this through a land lease with the school board with initial terms as identified in your handout this morning. We're willing to do that through a master land lease or a P-3 agreement that we were lucky enough to do the first one in the state of Florida with the City of Cape Coral, unsolicited P-3 agreement, the terms of which would be a 30-year agreement with a 10-year automatic renewal without a default or lease in the contract or problems with the delivery of the messaging. School board revenue is based on two things, the size of the DEMC and the number of trips. So it's all view-related. The more the views for each installation, the greater the revenue to the school board. On a poster size, which is 10 foot by 20, is about 12,000, 15,000 annually for the district depending on traffic counts. On a bulletin size, which is 10'6" by 36, are 20,000 to 26,000 a year depending on traffic counts. In addition to the annual payment that would come to the district, which would come to you at the beginning of your fiscal year, we pay upfront. Lamar pays annually upfront in total for the number of installations for the upcoming year. In addition to that, the district would receive 5% of available messaging controlled by Lamar on an as-available basis. And just to give you an idea what this works out to, recently, we have gone forward with the sales tax forgiveness weekend, preschool sale tax forgiveness weekend. Lamar came up with an idea, and the district allowed us to let them sponsor this idea where we came out and we put on our messaging, the tax-free holiday for schools for August 2nd to August 6th. We got permission from the district to do this on Thursday before that weekend. Over that weekend, you had 147,206 views throughout nine locations throughout Lee County of that message. That's the power and the scope of the power of this tool. In an agreement, there would be an escalator clause predetermined increase every five years in the agreement, limits on content. We understand the school district has concerns about what may or may not be put up on a digital electronic messaging center. So we would be willing to limit that control and discuss that with your staff and, of course, you as we move forward in the contract. We have initial language established with our relationship with the City of Cape Coral that controls messaging to their limits. Lamar's responsibility with this presentation is they own design, permit, build, maintain, and operate. All you do is provide the lease of the land and catch the value of the annual lease payments plus the 5% of the views as available and controlled by Lamar annually. In addition to that, digital faces, once they no longer meet the requirements of signage for our 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365, that normally limits the use of the electronics for seven to 10 years. Lamar will deliver faces to the school system for school, high school sites to be used as scoreboards for high school athletics. The life expectancy of these far exceed the need that we have on a continuing basis. They will have a life expectancy for Friday night football games or whatever other activities you want to use them for for quite a few years. And what we commit to you is not if we were able to enter into an agreement with the school board, is initially, we would use the large assets of Lamar nationally to provide the electronics to make a digital scoreboard for every high school in Lee County initially, and then replace them as our local boards come out of service. Specifically, what are we asking from you today? We like to ask you to consent to direct your staff to request an ordinance to change the Lee County Land Development Code to allow digital electronic messaging centers on school board properties throughout Lee County, and further direct your staff to make a determination regarding the type of the relationship they would prefer, whether it's a P-3 or a land lease, a master land lease. If you would direct your staff to move forward with those, we can get ready to present the documentation, get the county ordinance changed, and, by the way, we have already talked to county staff, including zoning and land use staff and zoning attorney, as well as all five county commissioners, and they are very supportive of this opportunity to change their code. They understand the financial constraints that the district has with regard to the need for an unencumbered, reoccurring revenue stream to the general fund, and they're willing to change their code to grant you that. But they need a request from you to do so. So that's it. I mean, we stand ready for any of your questions. We have worked diligently with your staff to answer numerous questions over multiple meetings over the last year, 18 months, and we stand ready to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Fisher?
So, back in 2017, you guys came over and we had a meeting about this, and I said, "Well, I'm sure our staff is going to be very interested in a continuing revenue stream." So I'm very happy to see that you are here today making this presentation. Revenue to the district is something that we can put to good use. I'm very happy that you have the limits on the content because that would be a very big concern for us, and the opportunity to use the recycled faces is also another benefit to us. So I'm anxious to hear my colleagues' questions. Thank you for being here.
Ms. Gittens.
Two questions. One to Superintendent and staff, and the other for you guys. The one is, on the school board revenue, Superintendent, what are we going to use that revenue for? Who gets that funding?
That's a good question, something that we're considering to work, continue to work on. One of the things that we would like to do is to use those dollars to supplement, you know, general fund dollars, which is where we have a real need right now. The other item that we have to really finalize is, you know, let's say that you have one of these properties that are located at a school site. So we need to make a final determination relative to what type of revenue sharing we would want to do with the school. Now, having said that, you know, from a school's perspective, it's usually, well, we want, you know, a pretty good slice of that, but not all school sites are alike. And so some of our more remote schools do not have, we found this with naming rights. You know, if you're fortunate enough to be at a Benita Springs high school, you have exceptional visibility from 75 and Imperial. If you're at East Lee County, you don't have as much opportunity, yet that poses an equity concern that we have as a school district. So those are some of the things that we're working for, or working through.
And what is the potential annual revenue?
That's a great question. I apologize for not making that clear in the initial presentation. We contemplate the initial distribution and deployment of 10 sites with the ability to go up to 40 sites over the term of the contract. We believe that, just say, an average of $20,000 per site, and 30, we limited it to 30,000, excuse me, 30 sites. So that's $600,000 a year within the first few years of the initial agreement.
Okay.
I just want to give staff an opportunity to come up and share some additional information, either Dr. Desmores or Ms. Eball.
You drew the short straw.
No, the short straw when we get to speak to the board. Good morning. So we just want to make a couple of clarifications that staff would like, if this is something that the board wants us to continue to pursue, that we would like to be able to have the opportunity to work to establish standards for these kind of projects where they would be sighted on land, for example, and other standards regarding the actual project. We also want to be clear that this is one vendor, there are other vendors who do this kind of work, so we want to make sure that it would be available and that we would work with the procurement process to provide for equity among vendors. Is there anything else we want to? Okay. So, yeah, we just want to really stress the idea that this is in a preliminary, this is preliminary discussions, and staff has yet to really be able to establish what the standards and strategies and specifics of this kind of activity moving forward. But if it is your direction for us to do so, we would proceed with that.
Ms. Gittens, did you have another question?
I have one more. On your handout, you say the district public service messaging at 5% of available messaging controlled by Lamar on an as-available basis. That kind of sounds like if you've got a lot of customers, we might never get anything up there.
We have the same language in our contract with the City of Cape Coral. We've exceeded the 5% every single month since we've operated.
Okay.
We preclude in our rotation, the availability and in our contracts with our other folks who are up on the messaging centers, the realization that there are public information things that have to occur.
And would that include, like, for example, Dorian and storms and hurricanes and things? Would they, do you have an agreement?
We have an agreement with the emergency management's operations in Lee County that once they declare a certain stage of hurricane preparedness, not just your boards, but all the digital boards in Lee County go to hurricane management messaging.
City of Cape Coral and Charlotte County.
City of Cape Coral and Charlotte County.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ball.
You touched on what my question is. Where do you have these signs right now so that we could look at them? And do you have a contract with any other school districts?
Okay, go ahead. Best and closest one is right out in front of your parking lot. So we have 29 throughout Lee County. We just built the first one in Charlotte County, right across the bridge from Punta Gorda. So it's, the expansion there is something we're quite proud of. As far as your question as to this being done anywhere else, the answer is no. Just like the City of Cape Coral, we were the first public, unsolicited, public-private partnership in the state of Florida. We pride ourselves on these kind of endeavors. It takes a long time. It takes a lot of work from not only us, but the entity that we're dealing with, but it's well worth it. We've been up now for two years in Cape Coral. Matter of fact, they're getting their third annual check October 1st. We, as Joe said, we do pay in advance, so there's no worries as to how we perform. You get paid regardless. So that's one of the other things that, in some of your other contracts that we've noticed, it's based on their performance. Ours isn't. We pay upfront. That's the advantage of being a 117-year-old company that's worth over $7 billion.
Okay, so, yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at your website or anything. So you're just a local, is it a franchise or is it a?
I wish.
I don't know. That's, I have not.
I'm not one of the lucky children. No.
Well, who knows?
It's corporate-owned. We're traded on the NASDAQ. We have, I'm not sure what the number is, north of 180 companies across the country. We bought a bunch at the first of the year, so I don't know what the latest number is. Like I said earlier, we're around 117 years. Fort Myers office is north of 50 years. So we have a longevity that's unsurpassed in the industry. Also, I might add, as long as I've got the mic, I might as well say it, we are the world's largest off-premise sign company. We are the world's largest user of digital technology. So there's a lot going on outside the scope of what we're talking about here, but the advantage is we were the first company in 2005 to go with digital signage like for this purpose. So you've got a lot of history working for you in this regard. I know that there was a comment about other vendors. There's nobody else that can do what we do to the scope that we do it, period. And just to support that provision, when we went to an unsolicited P-3 proposal with the City of Cape Coral, in essence, we delivered to the, we delivered to the City of Cape Coral a request with specific limitations as were part of the P-3 proposal that had to be sent out to the general public for, and offered for 120 days, they did it? Nobody responded.
If I may, just one more. So are there any areas of the country where the digital signage has taken off more than, let's say, southwest Florida?
Vegas, New York.
All right, well, that, okay, so urban, urban areas?
Much bigger urban centers, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
This is actually just a question for the Superintendent. This would, this land lease would be the same as our land leases with the cell towers, right? I mean, would be similar contracts, I would say?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So I'm supportive of it, but I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Jordan, go first. Ms. Gittens?
Oh, okay. I would just like to go on record, though, as saying if we have a potential of $600,000 a year, that it go to support our teachers' salaries rather than looking at, looking at millage or something else. I mean, this is a fund that we don't have to do anything and ask anybody for anything. It's just there.
I love being a part of your problem. You know, that's a great problem to have, is having to decide how to spend it. But guys, the best part about this thing is, just like with the City of Cape Coral, it was new to them, but it's, you know, as Joe pointed out to the city council, you know, this will support, how many, you know, two, a police officer? Two code enforcement officers on, for the next, for the life of the contract.
Ms. Jordan?
I would just say, I would be in favor of us digging deeper into this because I know Lamar has been here forever in Lee County and, as well as being engaged in the community. So I definitely think that we should proceed.
Ms. Moore? I would concur. I think we need to direct staff to go to the next stage.
I've got two questions. The first is, along the lines of the hurricane thing, if we were to have an emergency on one of our campuses, would we be able to take control of that board and put messaging out to the community?
Ed, how quickly, excuse me, Ben, how quickly can you take a message and be up on a board?
Within seconds, quite honestly. I mean, if you have, if you have content that's already developed, you shoot it to me via email, and it's very quick.
What the City of Cape Coral has done is provided some blanket background graphic material, and we can change the message and put it up instantaneously.
So you would be open to making that part of an agreement?
Absolutely. Let me just clarify that. Sitting here in your office, if you had the creative already downloaded, before you could get to the sign, it's up. That's how fast, and it's right outside your parking lot. It's incredibly quick.
This is probably a question more for Superintendent and staff. What's the downside here? Because we've heard all of the upsides. What's the downside? Why has it taken so long for this to come before the board? Where are our hesitations?
Well, I think, you know, I wouldn't necessarily call it a downside. I think from our perspective, similar to the City of Cape Coral, this is something new. It's something that a school district is not, you know, we haven't had a lot of, we haven't had any history doing this specific type of action. There's always questions that come up, like Kathy Eball had mentioned, relative to location of signs and so forth, and that's something that we would be working with the company, you know, in terms of strategic location. It does come up with the cell towers as well.
And if I may, I'll give you, because of your nature, of your business, content is vitally important. We'll have to sit down and iron out what is appropriate and not appropriate for school properties where you actually have kids. You know, there's a lot of things, like we do in Cape Coral, there's a lot of things that just aren't appropriate. We understand that. We're a family-owned company, and we will address it in writing in our contract. That's what we do.
Well, and along with the ability for that to change, because what's appropriate today might very well be inappropriate tomorrow, right? I mean, these are forever-changing community standards, right?
Yeah.
So there's got to be some flexibility, I think.
Yeah. You see, if you look at the language that we crafted in the City of Cape Coral document, it gives leeway and comfort level to the policymakers over there that they felt very good about moving forward with the, with the agreement. And just to talk about the fact that when you talk about going through your procurement methodology, the unsolicited P-3 proposal gives us the ability to frame that. So you would put out the exact project that we would propose. We ran into trouble initially with the City of Cape Coral when they tried to put together a request proposals that opened different doors than where we were going. So we, in 2014, when the state of Florida approved the unsolicited P-3 legislation, we jumped on that, used it, and it definitely gives everybody a very clear picture as to what the project is and limits bidding on specifically that project.
Madam Chair.
Which creates good comfort for everybody.
Yes.
May. So I just want to highlight a couple of things that I think the board is probably well aware of. So it seems to me that with regards to the ask, with regards to the request, now, the requests are specific to staff. There's no current contractual relationship between the board and Lamar, which I think you understand, but there are a couple of things that I think should be highlighted that probably would, probably come up later in the process as well. When it comes to, when it comes to content and limiting, there, you know, there is, there is case law and there are regulations that we would probably have to evaluate when it comes to what types of regulate, what types of content we would be regulating. And with the, with regards to the P-3 statute, there is a process as well that's outlined by statute, which I would be very remiss if I tried to take the risk to run it off the top of my head with you. But it is something that, you know, that I think that the board should be aware of, that those considerations would have to be ironed out with staff as you go forward, should you choose to go forward.
Great. And did you have something to add?
Just wanted to make it very clear that there are some items that we need to further clarify with our attorney as we go through these. They deal with site location, they deal with where exactly where we would want them, where are they appropriate, which campuses even, they might be appropriate. It's, these issues have come up before other jurisdictions, and we would want to be careful as we tread through this, not to just dive in quickly, but really be very thoughtful in our evaluation of this effort so that we end with a result that provides our district with the benefits and with the protections we need.
Right. Ms. Gittens, let.
I think the question comes to my mind that do we not owe it to staff since they did bring up the fact of a comparable vendor or someone at least to have that brought forward, if they have someone that could do that?
I don't, I think that what all we're going to do today is reach agreement for staff to continue to work and get more information to bring it back to us for approval. I think they have to go through the bidding process on this. I don't really think that.
No, that's what I was asking, is it, are we going through the bidding process?
I don't even think we're there yet.
Mr. Ross, make sure that I'm on the right track, and he can add to it I'm about to say. Related to this, this is revenue coming into the district, not expenditures from the district. So it is not, not the case that it is, you know, that it's subject to the bid process. However, we're wanting to just make sure we thoroughly vet everything. We have a lot of work to do related to working with our attorneys, working to, related to working with all staff, to make sure whatever proposal that the superintendent brings to you as a recommendation has kind of vetted all of the possibilities, hit all of the check marks, and that we do take into consideration who else may be able to provide such an opportunity, and that whatever recommendation the superintendent brings forward is the most advantageous to the district. So that would be, okay, so that would be kind of the process that Kathy was talking about. This is kind of, you know, territory that we haven't tread into before, so there would be a lot of work and a lot of time in making sure that the recommendation that the superintendent brings forward is, all our i's are dotted, all our t's are crossed, and we've done all the research and brought to you something that you feel comfortable with moving forward with.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Oh, I don't want to interrupt. If a board member has a question, I can go after.
Go ahead.
Okay. So you've heard the term unsolicited proposal, and I think that there, with regards to unsolicited proposals, so, you know, a private entity like Lamar or anybody else can come to, you know, a local government or a public agency and say, "We have this, you know, this service, we have this product that we think, you know, can, you know, can help you." With regards to that, you know, there are procurement procedures that are governed by statute that I think relate to unsolicited proposals. So I think what staff is trying to say, and I think what I'm trying to make sure that we communicate, is that, you know, this, this is just another step in the process, and just because it's not necessarily, you know, governed by our procurement policy because it doesn't have to do with a purchase, that there's still an opportunity to, to have different proposals presented to you. And I think that that's what Lamar is also saying, is that, you know, you've got the opportunity to work to develop that proposal and see what else is out there, I believe. And please, tell me if I'm wrong, and if I'm misstating what you said. I think that that's the idea behind that. So you would have options.
Madam Chair, that's exactly the case. An unsolicited P-3 proposal is not inexpensive to present, number one. And number two, you don't want to present it if you don't know there is a willingness to move forward with the proposal from the governing body. So that wouldn't happen. It happened in Cape Coral because of the inability of their staff to structure a RFP that limited the proposal to what we were saying. Whether you go out for an RFP for master lease, for digital electronic messaging centers, or you want to do a P-3 under the statute, solicited or unsolicited, we'll work with you to facilitate each one based on our most recent experience of what happened in Cape Coral. Like, we are the only one, the unsolicited P-3, that has made it through a local government process to the end. Yeah, and that, actually, that one contemplated approvals because we were using submerged land lease in Cape Coral, by the Cape Coral entrance, the Cape Coral Bridge entrance, we had to get approved by the city, the chamber, the county commission, and the Florida Cabinet. So we know how to run this process through all different levels of governing.
Ms. Jordan?
No, I was just going to reiterate that we're just, I am personally, it's just asking them to come up with their best solution and, of course, do their due diligence on what the procedures may be or what we need to do.
And so let's piggyback off that and seek consensus on what Ms. Jordan just said. I think that's kind of open-ended and all-inclusive, yeah.
Madam Chair, let me just reemphasize that there's two things that we need to happen, and they're both independent of each other. As one is to get your, to give your staff direction to request the ordinance change from the county, which has to happen before we can deploy anyway. Even if we went through the whole problem, excuse me, process of having a, an agreement that's approved by you, without the ordinance change to the county, it wouldn't work.
And then the second piece is to have staff pursue.
Work with staff, just as you've already talked about.
Okay. Okay, so let's start with Ms. Jordan. Do you, I'm looking at either one at the end have, no, sorry, point.
No, that's fine.
So let's look at consensus for what Ms. Jordan said, and then we'll go back for consensus on the second.
I have one quick question from what he just said, though. So the process of getting that P3 is something you would do regardless?
We have experience with it. There's more than one way to do a P3. We would prefer not doing an unsolicited P3, but if that's the direction we come to, we will do it. We would respond to a request for proposal from the, from the district. If that's what you're looking, we would, you know, if that's what we can come together. We're very willing to work with your staff. Your staff has been excellent in partnering with us, bringing us thus far. We may not have always had that with other agencies we work with.
So when we're talking about that process, though, in other words, we're saying that staff would continue to look at processes and bring it back to us, and you're talking about the P3, how does that line out?
P3 is one of those processes we would continue to refine with your staff. We would, it would be our preference not to come to you with anything that wasn't blessed by your staff.
Right.
Ms. Vaughn.
In the advan-
So just, just to clarify on the ordinance change, that would just be Lee County, the cities like the Village of Estero, Sanibel.
Ma'am, they're exempt.
And all of those would be Cape Coral, they would all be separate?
Yes, ma'am. Just the unincorporated parts of Lee County.
Okay, and would that include then, for the unincorporated Lee, all school board properties? For instance, I'm already thinking of the, on Six Mile Cypress, the bus depot, that would be like.
Remo.
There you go. You're right on the money. You're right on the money, that's one we presented.
So it would be any, I, I.
I'm sorry, you can't see it. This is actually a photo.
It's hard to see what you're showing.
This is the photo of the bus depot property with a super post.
I live on Daniels, I live in that area. I pass it quite a few times a week, so, yeah, there's a lot of traffic there. That would be a huge moneymaker, but it would include all, it wouldn't be just like this school, that school, it would be all.
Encompassing.
Property.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, we've looked at every single district property according to the Lee County Prop Appraiser, and we've worked with your staff as far as an analysis of the parcels that are owned or controlled by the district.
Right, okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that properly.
Mr. Bolter.
One of the advantages about having us do the P3 design is it spells out very specifically every detail from start to finish of how this is accomplished. We turn that over to staff, let them dissect it, but it gives them a great place to start. It's a clean document, it talks about everything that happens, and then they go to town.
Ms. Javanna.
So on the ordinance process, the change by Lee County, how long would, how long would that take? What do you, what do you estimate? And then like, cost? What would that cost?
This is very limited, so it would be a county-initiated change to the land development code, was it three or four words?
Yeah.
It's not very much in this, in a line in their code, so it would be the advertising cost for the public hearings is the extent of the cost. And the county's already on board with that, the county commissioners are on board with that.
Thank you. I had one other question. Oh, would you also put it on like vacant land that we have presently that, for future schools, and would we be able to have like some of our own little reciprocal advertising for like new schools, like for the MMM school or the, like, would you be able to utilize any of that, like putting the future school, like any of our, for our advertising, like, you know?
That would, yes, we would, we could include that specific type of messaging in those, in those views that are incorporated into 5% of the total advertising.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
Attorney Sanders, Saunders, my bad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify, and I'm probably beating a dead horse here, but with regards to the requests that Lamar are making, Lamar is making, you wouldn't be entering into a contractual relationship with them right now. What you would be doing is, as I understand it, staff would be the ones requesting from the county. We would not be asking Lamar to act as agents on behalf of the school board for that request.
Right. I mean, I'm not even sure that we need to ask staff to do two different things, because in order for them to bring us something that we can approve, that, that change in code has to take place, so that would be part of what we're directing them to do, no?
Yeah.
I'm repeating what I heard in our meetings with staff is what they were seeking from you. If that is encompassing your one direction to them, that's fine.
Okay, so why don't we seek consensus on, number one, directing staff to pursue changing the land code with the county? Is that, the land code, is that, what is it called?
The land development code.
Land development code, and to have staff further pursue.
It might be easier to, just to direct staff for the clarity and for processes. So I come from a different county, but our, the, my understanding is that the land development code regarding this doesn't, would not, would not, at least in Sarasota, it didn't, it didn't pertain to school property. So I would want to look into that more. I don't know how the procedures are here in Lee County, they may be different, but in Sarasota, the land development codes of the jurisdictions do not qualify for school property. And they had no, and their application of sign ordinances and things like that were in not applica, not applicable to school board property. So I want to clarify that with county staff to find out the procedures here. I'm not saying that it isn't necessary, but I would like to clarify it, because I know from Sarasota that it was not required of us.
They may have already looked into this.
Heard similar rumors.
Madam Chair, we did, and probably the staff is not aware is that Lee County has an interlocal agreement with the Lee County School Board with regarding the development of their properties.
Okay, so why don't we direct the superintendent to have staff look into the land development code and determine whether changes are needed, and if so, seek those changes, and to have staff do all background research and information gathering necessary in order to come to the board with a recommendation to move forward.
There you go.
Anybody? Thumbs up, thumbs down, can live with it?
I liked it.
We got 700 thumbs up. Mary, Ms. Reader, thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you all very much.
Before you go, Mr. Bolter needs to be recognized for the fact that he was one of the Rotarians on the Cape that spearheaded the, this is separate from Lamar. He spearheaded the efforts to get benches put at many.
On time, on time.
Hundreds and hundreds of benches with reflective materials on them to keep our students safe. So, Mr. Bolter, apart from the Lamar thing, thank you.
Thank you. I would be remiss if we didn't recognize Ben Henry, because he got the benches bought for way less than what we thought we were going to spend, so, you know, it was a team effort. A lot of Rotarians.
Thank you, gentlemen. Take your time. Next, we have Dr. Lee Master and Manatee Elementary School. While you're coming up here, I will tell you that I suspect that this is the favorite part of the day of all people seated at this dais, to hear what you guys, the awesome things you're doing in your schools, and hear about the kids, and.
And while they're getting ready to take a seat, I just want to talk specifically about, about this school, and I don't want to steal Dr. LaMaster's thunder, we certainly won't do that. He'll, he'll speak to, you know, the achievement of the school relative to achievement over the last several years, but Dr. Savage here has done some analysis statewide. And with his analysis, what he has the capability of doing is, is we can look at, how does a specific school perform relative to its peers statewide? Okay, so this is something different than we've been able to do prior to this year. So this particular school, and this is what this school does relative to its peers that have similar student demographics, you know, again, across the state of Florida. So in the area of English Language Arts, learning gains, 66 percentile, so they're in, in the top third there, 71% in the lowest 25%. Math achievement, they are at the 98th percentile in math achievement. That means top 2% in the state in terms of how they do as a school.
Dr. Atkins, you had to see Attorney Saunders' face, he was like, wow.
Learning gains, math learning gains, they're, they're at the top of the state, at 100%, 20, lowest 25%, 97%. Science achievement, 83rd% for an overall ranking at the 98th percentile in overall student perfor, school performance, top 2% of the state, right here, this staff.
Can you guys here be okay? Am I good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. And before I officially start this morning, I'd like to thank our board members, Dr. Atkins for this time, this opportunity today, and I'd like to also introduce two wonderful people with me. I'm Scott Lee Master, the principal, Amy Boback, a wonderful assistant principal, and Dr. Christina Trudersky, who is, I'm going to, several things here. She's a wonderful third grade teacher, she's a wonderful team leader, she's a wonderful school leader, and she's also a parent, a wonderful parent. So I'd be remiss if I didn't start that way. So the, in presenting our SIP today, we want to kind of talk about our school improvement plan, we want to talk about our journey. And to present our journey, we kind of have to go backwards a little bit. So what you see on the screen is a chart that shows the turnaround school committee data, which really looks at three-year, five-year, and 10-year school grade averages, looks at spout and tauk retention, administrative retention, and it shows our good buddies at East Lee right there, it shows us up there, and that's in terms of need for the entire county. So we started last year, East Lee and, and Manatee right at the very top. Moving forward, we think, and we really want our board members to know, and everybody to know, Manatee's been doing some really good things the last couple of years, and we really wanted to highlight and show you all that, that transition forward. UCF to D to C, and then last year, 106 points and 15% gain to a B, and I think kind of the bottom tells it, tells the story. We moved from, we were ranked in the 40s for elementary schools, and we moved to 14th in terms of school grade and points. Some of the key components to our Manatee, and team is extremely important to us, I am the third principal in five years, so I felt like, and our staff, it's not, it's really not I, it's our staff told me, Scott, relationships, I've always felt this way, but they were awesome telling me this, relationships and trust are everything. And so I was very fortunate in June to meet with most of the staff, paras, substitute teachers, teachers, and they, I really got a chance to learn them and learn about them, and I thought that was a great start. And then late, later in July, a wonderful young lady in our front office, a clerk typus and myself, Claudette Perez, visited. We went to homes, and we started visiting kiddos, and so that was a good opportunity. And whole staff-wise, we really emphasize a keg and trait, to learn four, four things not academic about our kiddos, and that's, that's throughout the school. But we also encourage our staff to let kids learn about you. So when they learn that Mr. Lee Master likes the gators, well, they might not like that, but we have something we can at least talk about, and our staff did a great job with that. Highlighting kids and staff any way possible, you all give us the opportunity to put on, do the right thing, and I, we were the school of the year last year, and I think that, our PBS, PBIS celebrations, clean card celebrations, reading celeb, I could go on and on and on, but I want you all to know that our kids really enjoyed themselves, and we're trying to validate their feelings and their choices that they're making. I know it sounds cliche, but trying to build the whole child. Meeting basic needs, I think the chart kind of gives us all a good idea where we're starting, and where a lot of our kiddos, they have some needs. Best kids in the world, and we try to help them with clothes, with shoes. If we don't have them, we're going to get them, that's our mentality. Our teachers greet kids at the door, whether it's an elbow bump, fist bump, hug, they always greet them at the door. We're very blessed, we have some great partners, Midwest Food Bank, we're able to give our kiddos food on Fridays, we deliver in the summers, so very fortunate there. This is, the next one is, work hard, be kind, and it says this is for all staff, because we say work hard and be kind, and Mrs. Harrow, I think, was somebody I heard say that phrase years and years ago, and I've kind of copied, good person to copy after, and that's staff, treating each other the right way, pushing that collegiality. We feel like if, if teachers and staff are mindful of what they say and how they say it to each other, we're great role models for the kids, and that's really, really worked for us. And the kids, if you say work hard, they're going to follow up with be kind. So building the trust, building those relationships, then we feel like the data really can come to fruition, because we're really intense with data from the start. One thing we've done the last couple of years, and this young lady to my right's done a wonderful job, we've worked on teaching our teachers what an actual academic gain is, so we can develop the plan with kiddos with regards to standards where they need to go, but first, we need to know what an academic gain is. Data chats with teachers, after our second data point, we'll sit with them, and it's very collegial, very non-threatening, you know, we'll, I'll say, hey, Mike, you're 13 for 20, that's awesome, 14 for 20, 70%, what's working? How can we help? There's a lot of things that we will do to try to help, whether it's in the mornings, working with kids after school, data chats with students, kind of dare to dream with our fifth graders. We set up and show them what a middle school schedule can look like, what a high school schedule can look like, and let me tell you, they get excited when they see a schedule at East Lee or Dunbar, they really get excited. That day is 70 to 80 minutes with our fifth graders, working on, looking at standards where they're strong, looking at standards where they need assistance. They help us develop the plan right then and there, moving forward for the entire year. A staff, it goes without saying, all 124, in my 26 years, I've never worked with a staff that has committed the type of effort I saw last year, so I'm very lucky and blessed. Home visits, we mentioned, we take them home, we have a school van, we're very blessed to have a school van, and if they need rides home, we'll take them home. Sometimes with tutoring, you know, a parent might not be able to get theirs, and that happens a lot, and I got to tell you, we really enjoy driving, you learn a lot about the kids that way. Really, with Saturday academies, breakfast clubs, lunch bunches, and tutoring, let me just say this, they give us extra educational time. Saturday academies, kiddos come in for four hours, we feed them, we have a lot of fun. We had survivor math, survivor math series a couple Saturdays last year, we really try to have a lot of fun with it. Strict attention to time, by late September, we'll try to get fourth and fifth grade bottoms in seats by 7:40, bell rings at 7:55, so you go into Mr. Cochran's room, 16 kids are reading quietly, he's in the back working with six kids, 15 minutes a week that might need extra assistance. It's an extra five hours a month. Extracurriculars, guitar club, Pink Diamonds Chorus in Manatee, Mrs. Boback leads Pink Diamonds, I lead Manatee Men, they're just awesome opportunities. We bring in role models from the community, we work on problem-solving, leadership, mindset, we talk to our boys about how we treat women, things like that, and I know I'm going fast, I'm sorry if I'm going too fast. District support, I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't talk about our ESOL team, they're not up there, but they should be, they are unbelievable. Mrs. Fletcher and Mrs. Harrow were, were awesome last year to us. Math team and reading team, I really want to make sure you guys know that Nick Piacavich and Kim Bisby are not only good at what they present, but they are well-received, they're good, kind people that our teachers just love, and that wasn't just last year, that's been going on for several years at Manatee. And, you know, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Savage, I want to thank too, Dr. Atkins delivered, he gets schools, he gets kids, he gets adults, but he delivered something a couple weeks ago that really meant a lot to me, to our staff, because I didn't feel like I was able to get our staff to see 106 points in a year, wow. He knocked it out of the ballpark, and I, again, I want to say thank you, he and Dr. Savage, for their help, because I think they really get it. I know that's really elementary, no pun intended, but that, but they really get it. Moving forward, goal, to become a consistent and sustainable team in all aspects. I'll say an I here, I don't like to say I a lot, but I feel like we, and I, owe it to our kids, our community, and our team, and we want to move our school grade to an A. What a story that would be. Fortunate enough to be with Doug Santini years ago at North Academy and be a part of that F to A, so I've been really lucky and very blessed, and I will now turn it over to these wonderful young ladies with our school improvement plan.
So moving forward into 1920 school year, we have five strategic goals that we selected based on the district's ABCs of attendance behavior and classroom success. Our first goal is about attendance, and more specifically, it's about our chronically absent students. We can't teach them if they're not there. So it's looking at a decrease of the number of students that are missing 20 or more days from 143 to 121 students. Before we can look at the attendance, though, we need to look at the why behind the attendance. Why are they missing school? Is it academics or is it basic needs? If it's academics, then we need to look at filling in the holes and the gaps that they have with the teachers and the students, and making sure that they're allowed to be successful and feel successful. If they feel successful, they're going to want to come to school. Really, what goes back to Dr. Lee Master also is building relationships. I feel Manatee builds relationships second to none. It's vital in what we do each and every day with our students. If it's basic needs, we're for. If it's basic needs, we're fortunate enough that we have a school nurse five days a week. And we have, because of a state grant this year for 1920, we were able to increase our school social worker to five days a week. This has allowed us to create an attendance team that really provides wraparound services for our students in terms of, do they need medical needs? Do they need clothing? Do they need food, supplies, material needs, housing? This is really important for us to address their basic needs, because a lot of our students will not come to school if they do not have clean clothes. Part of our grant also this year is to provide washers and dryers in our school that parents can come and take English classes and learn English as well as, sorry, as well as do laundry if they need to. It's really, ultimately, it's about getting the students at school so they can learn and being successful. That's the most important thing. We provide attendance incentives to students. We meet with our students that are our chronically absent students weekly. We provide attendance incentives to grade levels. We drive them home. We pick them up. A lot of our students do not live close to Manatee, so we put a lot of miles in the Title One van to go and pick up students, because a lot of times, if they miss the bus, they're not coming. So we need them to be in school to get the education that they deserve.
Which really goes to where our second goal is, and that's targeting school behavior. I've had the position of being at Manatee for the last four years, so I've seen the transition and what's happened in going from that F status to what I hope will be, no, I don't hope, I know will be an A this year. But really looking at, Manatee, when I went there, had a reputation for negative behaviors from the students. And that's really turned around in the last several years, specifically last year. We had a decrease in the number of referrals that we had written, but we did have an increase in out-of-school suspensions. As a teacher, I needed that support. I needed the students to know that certain behaviors were not acceptable. And that message has really gotten across to our students. But now we need them back in school. So the way that we're approaching that this year is we're really looking at what is the cause, what's the root cause of those behaviors? Is it academics? Are you, just, excuse me, are you showing those behaviors because you're avoiding what you can't do? Okay, then I need to figure out a way to teach you what you need. Or is there something else more going on with that child that we need to get that team that Ms. Boback was talking about, the school social worker, the guidance counselors, that whole mental health piece, that we may need to address with a child? So it's really looking at that team approach and building relationships with our families.
Our next three goals really just all surround classroom success. Our first goal in this department, we have two proficiency goals, and we have one about making learning gains all around English language arts. As you heard from Dr. Atkins, thank you very much, the comments about the grades in comparison to the state, we saw that our math was up in the upper area. We're not satisfied with that. We can still go higher. But we still need to address our English language arts. And one of them is our proficiency in grades K to 2. If we do not have our students reading on grade level in kindergarten, first, and second grade, we are behind the eight ball every single time when they get to third grade. That's not fair to them. That's not fair to anybody. So our goal is really about making sure that they're proficient. We have been fortunate this year to have an ELA coach that is geared just in the kindergarten, first, and second grade levels, that is coaching our teachers, working with our students. We have reading on the specials wheel, so when they go through the rotation with PE, music, and art, one of their specials is also reading. So we see the importance of it. We do quarterly academic planning. We do our data chats with teachers, even with our students in kindergarten. Yes, they can understand their data. We phonics daily, phonemic awareness daily. It's looking at what each individual student need in order to address them to continue to move forward. It's not wrapping everybody in one little umbrella and saying, they all need this. It's not fair to them, because we have a lot of students that are monolingual that come in, and it's about making sure that they get specifically what they need in order to be proficient.
And those strategies that we talked about with the K1, 2 goal, they are systemic changes. So there are things that are going on K1, 2, and 3, 4, 5. So the planning meetings, the PLCs, the data chats, those are things that we're starting with our kindergartners and training them and our teachers that will continue to carry up with them as they move all the way to fifth grade. I'm in the position of not only being a third grade teacher, so I know how important the K1, 2 piece is, but I'm also a first grade mom. And I'm a first grade mom of a student with disabilities. So I know that I have to put my child in a place where I know that she's gonna receive what she needs, and I know that she's getting what she needs at Manatee, because I know the processes that are in place that plan not only for her, but for all of the students within the school. And it's really become a point where we're almost writing prescriptions for each student. What do you need? What are your needs? What gaps do you have? And those are the things that we have to address with our students and get them to internalize. These are the things that I need to learn to move to the next level. And those are the things that we're working on, not only in K1, 2, but as we move into 3, 4, 5.
I think that really hit everything.
Yeah. And that really does hit everything, even in terms of learning gains. One of the things I will take pride on in terms of the learning gains is, and I would even, I would even go a step further when we were talking about the breakfast clubs in the morning, in that morning time. 7:40, I think we can get them in at 7:35, 7:33 timeframe. It's a matter of getting our intermediate students off the bus, starting at 7:25 and getting, and we have a breakfast line that comes right off the bus ramp for our third, fourth, and fifth grade students. They grab the breakfast, they go up to class, they are in class, ready to learn. And we have worked with our teachers on a program that we use at our school with iReady in terms of looking specifically at the day before and what students need and what they were struggling with the day before. And let's bring you back to the back table. Let's talk about these needs so we can address them. Because if you're just allowing them to do a program and not having that follow-up with that program, you're not gonna see the academic gains that you need from your students.
And I might add two real quick things before we finish. One, when we talk about the morning programs, the kids are just unbelievable. They're awesome. I mean, I just, again, I've been fortunate, blessed to see lots of good things, especially in Lee County. The kids are unbelievable. Sometimes people might think, well, to get them in seats, you know, this time, they're awesome. I said something to our team a couple of weeks ago, and I kind of caught their attention. I said, possible perception in the past was that boys and girls at Manatee Elementary School might not be able to learn like others. And everybody paused, and I said, and whoever might have thought that was right, our kids can learn better and more than others. And that's just prideful, me speaking prideful. And I said to our staff, you all did that, and our kids showed that they can learn better than others. And I said, that's only possible perception, because you guys saw that Manatee's been doing good things for a couple of years now. This has been building. And hopefully, we will, hope is not a strategy, but we will continue to work hard to make sure things work out. And the last thing I would say is, we use the word "love" a lot. I'm not, I will be, I'm not shy about that. We all use the word "love." Our kids know that we love and care for them. Thank you for the time. Questions? Ma'am?
Ms. Fisher. I just, I'm loving the look on your face. Ms. Gittens.
Oh, okay. I thought she had a comment. How are we spreading these wonderful best practices and policies? And I think this is for Dr. Spiro. And I know we're gonna hear more from East Lee. How are we transforming these successes into nuggets to go out to all of the other schools to learn and to grow from these same things?
Good afternoon. That's a great question, Ms. Gittens. And so there are a number of avenues that we use to make that happen. First off, we do take lessons that have been learned from other schools, and we share them across the district. And when our teams go out and then from curriculum and instruction, and they share those strategies, that's a common approach that we are using. Also then, we do have teams that are coming down and through our data chats that happen quarterly. We have those teams come down and share with others their successes that they had. And so it's a multifaceted approach. It's not something we want to see in isolation, and certainly not something that we want to keep a secret. We want to share learnings from leaders in other schools and how they implement successful strategies, and try to replicate those throughout the district.
Do we ever do a, I used to call it a walk a mile in my shoes, where they, you know, one school goes and visits the other school and kind of, you know, follows them and to see how it all works in a real time?
Yes. So a number of years ago, Dr. Atkins implemented the Principal Lead Program. And the Principal Lead Programs take lead principals, and they have certain schools that are assigned to them. All schools have a principal lead. And part of that process is those principals go and they walk other buildings and other classrooms and engage in those conversations around teaching and learning. From my end, in the area of academic services, we're gonna be doing academic cabinet in schools, where we are actually gonna be walking classrooms with all academic cabinet leaders. We're doing APC meetings are going to be at other schools as well. And when we get the opportunities, we'll be doing that at principal meetings also. So I told you, it's a very multifaceted approach, because there is a lot of value in seeing great teaching occur. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
I just want to say thank you, because you are right. It is all about the relationships. And once you set that tone, the possibilities are endless. So thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome. And thank you for your support.
Anyone else? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. And I'm gonna echo that. And it's not just the teachers to the kids, but it sounds like you have a wonderful team. And I've seen in the past when teachers feel that. My question has to do with, do you have any data on pre-K attendance or head start, early head start for your kiddos? Because I'm guessing with your demographics, a lot of your kids, if they haven't been to a quality pre-K program, that they come to kindergarten not ready to learn. So what?
That's a great question. So, and I love this, actually. So we have one pre-K class, nine students, and their attendance is excellent. What I would love to have in the future, and Mrs. LaFountain and Title One and I have talked about this, is the possibility of us having some VPK right on our campus. I think that would be wonderful. Our parents would love it. Like I said, our kids and parents are absolutely wonderful. So I, you know, for those nine kids, their attendance is excellent. But we want for the future, and we've talked about this, to have two or three.
Is there room in the school?
Not so much in the school. We're pretty full. But, you know, I don't want to start saying things about portables and things like that. I guess I said it. But, and we would make room. Mrs. Boback says it well. He would love to. And it's almost, as a former high school coach, it's a, like you said, it's a feeder system. And I would love to have 30, 40, 50 little teeny-tinis and, you know, getting them in to build that readiness.
If I might add in also, just to kind of like what you were asking about, about the pre-K and head start and them coming in because of our high number of monolingual students. Last year, our baseline data of kindergarten students coming in, taking the Star Early Literacy, we were 9% proficient on grade level. So 91% were below grade level.
Yeah. And that's not, that's not surprising. So it sounds like the more kids that we can get into head start, early head start, VPK, any of those programs, the better. Probably if some of your kids go to early learning center.
A few here and there, not a lot.
And one final thing on that. You said you have nine. What, how many could be in there?
I want to say that number might be 10 or 11.
And that would be it.
It's an ESC pre-K.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to work on an addition to the school or something where, in our areas with your kind of demographics, where we have more, because you're doing a wonderful job with the kids. But hey, it would speed the process to an A if they would come into kindergarten already, ready to learn.
Great idea.
This is really one of, what we hope to be a focus this school year is to be able to make real traction in the area of pre-K and of course, career and tech ed. So, you know, Dr. Savage had been looking at the possibility of adding pre-K to James Stevens International Academy when he was over there. We feel we can go back to those type of efforts, because kindergarten readiness is really a community concern that we as a community need to tackle and really get real, get real, face up to the fact that this is a community problem, and let's do something about it as a community.
Ms. Jordan?
I just want to say thank you very much. And I do appreciate the word "love," because I do believe that if children feel loved, they're gonna do so much better. But my question is, when you're saying you have a child that's not in school, you go pick them up? So is there a person who monitors that, and then they make the call to the home, and then they go?
Yes, ma'am. A lot of texting back and forth. We give, a lot of parents do have ourselves. We have a homeless child that is moving around. We have an established bus stop. Transportation does a great job there. But sometimes a parent will text us and say, hey, hey, we moved. I know last year, there were several times, you know, I'd go get, Ms. Boback would ride with me. And, you know, I have parents that'll text me and say, Mr. Lee Master, you missed the bus this morning, can you go get them? Absolutely. I mean, that's, it's really kind of a different, but neat part of the job.
So it's the parents that are calling you to notify you.
Yes, ma'am. Texting and calling, yes, ma'am.
But that goes back to the relationship piece that we have with the parents, that because they do have our cell phone numbers, and they do talk to us, and we do have that, they feel comfortable enough to reach out to us in order to get that support. And that goes back to those basic needs. We need them here.
It's really kind of cool. I'll get a text message at 6:30 on a Saturday night saying, hey, Scott, I mean, we're just, we're family, we're all family. And, you know, so-and-so, Johnny can't come to school Monday morning because he doesn't have this, or he needs this. And I say, I got you, we'll work on that, you know? But it is, it's back to that relationship piece. And I know that's a little different, too, maybe giving cells out and things like that. But it's really always worked really well. And our parents, they see that we really care and love them.
Well, I was gonna say, it also works the other way around from a teacher's perspective. I had a student who missed over 20 days last year, and we got to a point where he wasn't coming to school because he didn't want to. He was coming to school because of some family challenges. So our family involvement specialist would call that morning, I can't get here, I missed the bus, whatever it was. And they didn't live that far down the road. Within half an hour, he was in the building. So it made a huge difference, especially for that child. Ms. Gittens?
On your first slide about the committee data, you are one of the few schools that in fact increased the retention of your employees. And I know because of relationships and all of that, and them wanting to be there, do you have very many of your staff and teachers that live in other places and commute to you?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. We have some actually even come from Punta Gorda. Yeah.
I'm terrible with names.
Scott.
No, third grade teacher.
Christina, Dr. C.
Thank you. So you came to a meeting, a school board meeting, a couple of years ago, didn't you? Yes, ma'am. To thank Dr. Atkins for advocating for you in front of the Board of Education? Yes, ma'am, I did.
So that we weren't, because we were in turnaround status and you guys had a lot of things in place that were going to move you.
At that point in time, we were a D school and we were, continued to be in fear of restructuring. And so Dr. Atkins went before the state and requested an extension. That was the year that Hurricane Irma hit. So we were really under the gun that particular year. And even though we got the extension, we were very excited. We didn't need it because we moved to a C the following year.
Well, you made a heck of a positive impression on me back then. And the impression you made on me today is even greater, you and your colleagues. Thank you very much for what you do for our children. And I know we don't usually clap, but this deserves. And next we have East. Can we clap first? I think Ms. Robbery brought half of her staff.
We have lots. So this is only a representation.
No, I'm kidding. It's great to see everybody.
So Manatee, when I started doing the school visits this year, Manatee was the school that I had the, really got the start. It was before the official start of the year when I went out and met with the staff just to share some of the information I shared with you today. Eastlake County was the first school that I officially visited when students were coming into the building. Of course, what you just saw, some high fives as they took the stage, was exactly what Ms. Robbery and staff were doing to every student that they possibly could coming into the building the first day of school. And it's what they do every day. So phenomenal group, incredible culture. So it's with great pleasure, I'd like to introduce Eastlake County High School and Ms. Robbery, take it from here.
Thank you so much. Good morning, board members, Dr. Atkins. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk to you and to tell our story of transformation at Eastlake County High School. And to also share with you our 2019, 2020 school improvement goals that will continue the journey. Because we know we have made great strides, but our kids, and they don't always like it when I call them kids, but they're my kids. They deserve the best. And so this is a journey for us and we are excited about what the future holds for Eastlake County High School. With me today is our two students, Stephanie Lavalay and Travis Burke. And then we have my assistant principals, two of them, Karen Blaze and Katie Scoville. And I have two of our amazing instructional leaders and teachers, Mimi Neil-Gusby and David Rodriguez. And what I will say is this has been truly a team effort. There are many times that I get the praise for what's happened, but this is, this is an amazing group of kids, an amazing staff, and it has been 100% a team effort. We believe that if you have a child's heart, you have their mind. And we live, we live by that every single day, from the moment our students walk into the building till the moment they leave. And that truly has been the transformation of our culture at Eastlake County High School. I often tell the story, so I apologize if you've heard it before, of my first few days at Eastlake County High School in January of 2018. And I met with a group of students and I gave them homework and I said, "I really want you to think about what I can do as your principal to make the biggest impact on our school." And I said, "I don't want you to tell me now. I'm going to come back in a week and I want, because I really want you to think about it." And so I left and the conversation started. And this wasn't my first rodeo. I'd been a high school principal before, so I in my mind had all of these things that I was thinking that they were going to tell me when I went back. So I was coming up with all of these responses to what the kids were going to say. And so I was expecting, "We want to wear shorter shorts. We want to wear, we want to have McDonald's at lunch. We want to have more Pepperellies." And I have to tell you, when I went back, that's not what I heard. Not even close. What I heard was, "Mrs. Robbery, we want a school that we can be proud of. And we are in a, we are on a, it makes me, we are on a relentless mission to make that happen for our kids and for our staff." So we are here to tell you our story. And as Scott said, it's important for us to tell you kind of where we came from. And the APCs really made it work for our team over the past year and a half. We have had tremendous increases in both staff and student attendance. That has been critical to the success, to our classroom success. That has been critical to the success that we have seen with reductions in behavior issues. We are very proud of the fact that we saw last year an overall decrease of close to 40% of our behavior referrals at Eastlake County High School. And we've developed systems to better support our kids. We looked at some very specific areas when we looked at discipline because 96% of our referrals came in four areas. So we really targeted those four areas last year. And so we're very, very proud. All four of those areas went down pretty consistently. Our disruptive behavior referrals went down close to 60% and our skipping referrals went down 59.21%. That's amazing. That's more kids in class. And it goes back to that attendance piece. When the teachers are there, the kids will be there. So it really, the ABCs make sense and they really, they really, the efforts that we make in one area really support the other. And of course, our classroom success is reflected in our 27-point grade increase that brought us to a C. So I wanted to just show you a very simple graphic of where we are at this point and then we will, we will talk about the areas that catch your eye. The one big one for me is the decrease in college and career acceleration. And so I want to address that because I'm thinking you might have questions about that. Remember that that is lag data. So that is, that is actually data from the year before last. And very honestly, if I'm full disclosure, when, when I got there in January, there was a lot, there were a lot of things that needed to be done right away. And so we had to prioritize. And our goal was to make sure as many of our students cross that stage as could possibly do. And we wanted to see an increase in student achievement of all of our students. Since then, we have really put some things in place, which my team will talk to you about, that really support not only graduation rate and, and classroom achievement, but also that college and career acceleration. Really to show the story, I want to, go ahead. I want to talk about, from the time that we started our journey of transformation, we have increased 45 points in our school grade. We have increased our, our graduation rate nine points. That's almost 50 more students that crossed the stage with a diploma than had the previous year. And I really like to look at data in that way. I see kids' faces. We increased 13 points in ELA achievement. That is 13 percentage points of our students who were not proficient when they came to us and left us proficient. We had 12, 12 points in ELA learning gains. We increased our science achievement 13 points over that time and 12 points in social studies achievement. We have done that really through a systematic approach of improvement in instruction across subject areas. And the team will talk to you a little bit about that. I talked about the more students graduating and really, it comes down to us that our culture has shifted to excellence. Our kids deserve it. We believe in them. We know that they can do it. We're going to own, engage, and represent every single day. And so now, our, one of our instructional leaders, David Rodriguez, is going to talk to you about the goals that we've established for 2019, 2020. David?
Thank you. Good morning, school board members. One of the things that we looked at for our goals for the attendance is obviously to increase student attendance compared to the previous year. And we also are still looking to increase our staff attendance where we want to see the, the number of days decrease throughout the year. Our behavior, we're also looking to hopefully have a decrease in 33% throughout the year. And with some of the things that we put in place with capturing kids' hearts and, and looking at relationships with teachers and students, that we think that this can be achievable. And for the classroom success, just like Ms. Robbery already mentioned, we are on a relentless mission, but it's also focused. So we know what it is going to take to be able to get to a beat. So we, we know that students need to continue making learning gains. We know students need to continue making learning proficiency, especially in history and biology. And that's looking specifically at the level ones and twos and what learning gains they need and what areas they need, but also making sure that our level five, fours and fives are able to maintain their, their current learning gains.
Thank you.
So to reach those goals, the administrative team meets weekly and each of us are also a liaison to one of the tested area PLCs that meet weekly as well. So each week that we meet, we go over our attendance data for our A of the ABCs. We look at tardy data. One of the things we realized is last year, you saw the huge decrease in our skipping referrals. They went down 59%. Our tardies, however, went up significantly. So now they're going to class. We're just trying to get them there on time. So we're really focusing on our tardy data this year.
And I said, "I'll take that." I said, "I'll take that." We'll get them.
So we also look at the attendance data. We have a great attendance team. We have two full-time social workers, thanks to the same grant that Dr. Lee Master talked about in his school. And they are on the phone daily with students and parents, making sure that they are getting to school on time. They're doing the same kind of reach-out efforts to figure out why it is that they're not coming to school. So they, they meet with us periodically as well. And then we also look at the district attendance survey data and see how we compare to the year before. In behavior, we pull our weekly discipline data. We pull the referral data. We also check CASL and see how many times certain students were removed from classes in the previous week. Does that indicate that we need a positive behavior support plan for the student? Or does it also indicate, hey, we need some more support for our teaching staff to come up with some alternative solutions before they get to the point where the student has increased the behavior that they need to be removed from class? So those action plans are noted there. And finally, the classroom success checks. We do meet with our PLCs weekly. We are involved in their lesson planning and their formative and summative assessments. We look at the progress monitoring, updates in STAR and Compass. Biology, for one, with Ms. Neil-Gusby was just constant focus last year on what they needed to improve in their instruction. What did the data show them and how they were going to get those standards covered in class? And then also something we started last year, we met with our tested PLCs quarterly and we did, we're doing it earlier this year. We, we started this in third quarter after our STAR data last year. But we went and spoke to the teachers of those grades and we said, in subject areas, "How, okay, you were at 33% proficiency last year. What do you think you can hit this year? Here's our school improvement goal." And they all kind of went, "Oh, my gosh, I can't make that 12% jump." So we asked them to give us a number. And then we said, "Okay, now go and look through your rosters. Look at your third period. Look at your fifth period. Look at your seventh period. Which of those students do you know can make a learning gain?" And when they went and talked about the child and not the number, their projection was through the roof. In addition to the 12, they found 50 more kids that they knew, "Oh, I know I can get them to just jump a bucket. I know I can get, you know, this student to do that and this student to do that. And this level three can get to a level four." So then they started focusing on the child and their numbers went through the roof.
So, good morning. One of the things that Katie was speaking about and actually Dr. Lee Master mentioned is that hope itself is not a strategy. So we have some very specific strategies that we put in place we wanted to share with you. We are expanding our ACE course offerings. And as a matter of fact, we're including ACE General Paper as our class for most of our English IV students. So those class, they're taking a class that's a lot like your comp class for English I, but we're given the option for those that would like to test for it to earn a college credit. I actually had a teacher come to me today and ask if we could please move her class up to the college level instead of just the general level because she's got a commitment from her class that they're ready to do it. So we've got a lot of students who are starting to see that they have potential. A lot of that was driven by our success last year. We had in our initial offerings for some courses like ACE English Language, ACE Thinking Skills. Mimi was actually the instructor for Thinking Skills and believe it or not, I taught ACE English Language for a long story that we won't go into. But our kids had more than a 60% pass rate. For a school's first year with ACE, that's phenomenal. So we're very, very proud of the work that our teachers and students have doing and it is changing our culture. We have very strategic placement for students in double block and single classes. So when Ms. Scoville was talking about individual, we scheduled individual students very purposefully in places where it's not a homogenous group, more of a heterogeneous group, but it gives them that strategic laser focus that they need based on every individual kid. We have partnership with district instructional supports and we're so grateful for the support the district has offered in so many places. We have internal coaching and peer collaboration and specific systems to make sure that that happens for all teachers. And a continued shift, and this is really the big shift, from a school-wide focus to an individual student focus. Just like the, our folks at Manatee were speaking about, if you have everybody in an umbrella, you're not hitting the individual student need. So what Ms. Scoville was talking about in our PLC work last year, we started looking at individual students, class by class, roster by roster. We also have a college and career acceleration tracker and a graduation tracker, which we'll talk about. But first, I want to talk about how testing might not be boring and might actually help our kids. So we have an amazing testing coordinator who couldn't be with us today because she's actually teaching right now. Our testing coordinator and, and our admin team got together and we decided that we're going to change the way we do testing at the high school level. And for those of you that have experienced it, it's, it's a behemoth to move. But what we decided to do was use the entire testing window. And we allowed students to test with their teacher, if at all possible. So if I'm an ELA teacher, the kids that I'm actually proctoring are my students. And those students will perform better and they did. But it takes a lot of organization and a lot of strategy. The other thing we did is we had individual students that we looked at their calendars as well. So if, for instance, student number four has to test in geometry and in reading, we wanted to make sure that that student didn't have to do geometry Monday, Tuesday, reading Wednesday, Thursday, some EOC. We wanted to make sure they had a break. So we looked at every individual student and their testing calendar. And then we built it out. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mimi.
Another area of focus that we had was our, looking at our PLCs. So as both of the APs brought out, I was the PCT, the Peer Collaborative Teacher for Bio. And as she said, it was really an individual student. So I remember in that data chat that Ms. Robbery came in and she sat with the biology team and she said, "Okay, we can get up to, you know, 50%." And we were looking at her like, "No, we can't." And then we started to look at individual kids. So each teacher pulled their individual and we were sitting there like, "Okay, no, 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 no. I have 10 kids. I have 12 kids." And then once we realized it, we were like, "Okay, we can get to that 50% easily." So making sure that, we were very strategic. So our first semester of PLCs is really building teacher capacity. We're looking at how can we support the teachers? Do they know what the standards say? Are they teaching it at the DOK level that will be tested at? So that first whole quarter and a half was really making sure our teachers knew what was to be expected on any test that they had to take. And then after that, we started to really focus on the individual students. So now that we know what the teachers know what they need to teach, how are we going to make sure that the kids learn? So we implemented things like criteria for success. Do our students know what they need to know for this benchmark? Do they need, do they know where they're at right now on this benchmark? So that way, they knew their pre-test data, they knew when they were doing their formative assessments, where they were going. So that way, when we got to the end, there was no big surprise because we had so many data points, not from a department, to teachers, to individual students. Everybody knew what they were supposed to be doing and what goal we needed to meet. And we did that in all of our tested areas. So one of the things that we really looked at was individual things. So a lot of our non-tested areas were like, "Well, what can we do?" It was really looking at our kids' ELA and their reading levels. So say, for example, in a high school chemistry class, the chemistry teacher were looking, he was looking at all of his individual students. Are they on target to, for graduation for their math? Are they on target for their ELA? What can I do as a chemistry teacher to support that? What can I do as the welding teacher? What can I do as the criminal justice teacher? So all of our teachers, whether they're in a non-tested area or not, knew what their individual student's data was and how to support them.
In the college and career acceleration component, Mrs. Robbery and I attended the DA Academy for the summer of 2018 and listened to a gentleman who does the CTE program in Orange County. And one of his statements really, I can't think of the word now. Thank you. I was going to say relegated. Resonated with both of us. And that's that not every student is going to earn an industry certification or a college course, but every student should have the opportunity to earn that. So when Ms. Blaze and I were looking at the master schedule this summer, it was, okay, which one of our students, and we just pulled every student from Focus in 11th and 12th grade, have they been in an ACE course? Have they been in an AP course? Are they in dual enrollment? Are they in one of our career academies? And if they're not, what can we create for them so that they have that opportunity this year? So we now have an interactive tracker where as soon as the students are enrolled in one of those courses or given the opportunity, we mark it on that tracker and we say, "Okay, the student has had their opportunity." And now we're expanding that to our 9th and 10th grade so that we're not with our 12th graders in the next few years saying, "Oh, my gosh, we've missed this one student." So nobody's falling through the cracks. So nobody's falling through the cracks. For all seniors, though, really focusing on the 12th grade, we also have a live Google Sheet. Castle is great when it comes to spot checking for the graduation tracker, but we now pull that data quarterly and make sure that, okay, as our students are going through, have they met all of their credit requirements? How is their GPA? Have they passed their EOC and their FSA? Or do they need to sit for the ACT or SAT? With our grant this year, we are adding an additional opportunity for our seniors to do that in-school SAT. The first time around, we gave that 50% of our students that sat for it passed and earned their Concordant score. And now that the state allows the SAT to meet the math score as well, we're going to shoot through the roof when we take that test in October. And they're asking about it now. The first time around, it was, oh, my gosh, I have to sit here all day because it's a time and a half assessment. It literally takes for those poor kids the entire school day that they have to sit and have a 20-minute real quick break for lunch. But they are now, okay, when is that going to happen again? Can I sit for that? You know, the juniors are asking because they saw how successful it was. And all of the parent and student contacts, the counselors, the social workers, the E2020 instructors, our testing coordinator, everybody is calling. All of that content is based, a contact is documented in that tracker so that the next time around, when the counselor's meeting or somebody else that didn't make that first point of contact, they can see what the story is for that particular student.
But we wanted to give you an opportunity to hear from the people at Most Impacts, which is some of our students. So Stephanie?
Good morning. Can you guys hear me? Well, based on the things that happened at Easton County High School over the years that I've been here have been changed greatly. Often, the times I'd meet other people from different schools, they'd be like, oh, my gosh, you still go there? You really still go there? I'm like, yeah, I still go here. But now I actually have reason to be proud of my school because there's different opportunities to help you build your career and many different academies that help you. And I'm in the L's program, which is
You're doing great.
L's, which stands for Empowered Ladies Leading East. And we have Mr. Rodriguez, who teaches model men. And all these different types of stuff helps East become a better school. And I'm absolutely proud for that. And we have financial classes that helps you manage money. You could, in different time periods and different classes, teachers teach their students how to work with other people, even though you may not like them.
Skill. That is a skill.
It teaches you that you need other people in order to be successful in life.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. Right now, I am in my senior year, but when I first arrived to Eastly, I was a sophomore. And due to various circumstances, it has been my third high school at that point. Not super great, but I made it work. And when I first got here, I was kind of confused about what I was going to do. I wasn't in any sort of advanced classes, but just after maybe the first half of the quarter, or the first quarter, I was immediately noticed and I was placed into advanced classes because the people around me right now saw that I am of a high enough caliber to do that. And I can proudly say that now entering my senior year, I'm on track to get an ACE Cambridge Diploma. I'm in multiple advanced classes. I'm the president of the Drama Club. I'm so proud to be here, and I wouldn't be here where I am without these people around me. And I'm glad to say that I go to Eastly, and I personally think that my future is going to be pretty good, so.
So I'm going to end our part of the presentation with what I say regularly to our students and staff. We believe in you, and there is a very good reason why there's a big ol' EO in the middle of the word believe. Thank you so much for allowing us to tell our story, and we appreciate the support that we've been provided. We could not do this for these students without the support that we receive from district staff, from 120 teachers that work tirelessly every single day to do the best thing for kids, to an amazing administrative team, all of our support staff, our cafeteria people, our custodians. We have 187 people in our building that know and love our kids and believe in them. Thank you so much.
Anyone? Let's start with Ms. Jeanne.
I just want to say, I'm proud too. So y'all are doing awesome, and you just made my day. So it's just great. Thank you for just continuing everything you're doing. A lot of, I can see a lot of work went into this and thoughts and I'm sure sleepless nights because I can see the work. It's a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gettens?
Okay, I'm going to try to get through it without tears too, Ms. Robery. I believe in Easton, have for many years, and have been on the lines there fighting to show that belief and to change the culture. And thank you for what you're doing. One of the points I want to mention, I've often said that to people to remember that each data point, each number is a child. And you guys have got that down pat, that it's a child. When you talk individual, as many times as we saw individual on this PowerPoint, you've got that down pat, that each number is a child and their future. One of the things talked about, the downturn in disruptive behavior. And I personally believe that's due to the next thing you said about teaching and staff support.
Absolutely.
The item of disruptive and insubordination has to do with that relationship and understanding. Like I mentioned this morning in the workshop, seek first to understand, then to be understood. It really, really resonates with that. And you also mentioned about, one of the things was the downturn in the college and career acceleration. But my question with that is, was there an upturn in industry certifications to balance that out?
So at the time, remember, this is lag data, so this is from the year before last. One of the things that we have done is really look at opportunities for our students. We had some academies that were struggling in providing industry certification for our students. So we had to have some real honest and constructive, critical conversations about what we needed to do for our kids and what was going to be in our students' best interest. And I believe we were able to open an AG program. I actually had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Atkins this summer, and we talked about expansion of CTE. And I'm actually meeting with the CTE staff next week to talk about some of the ideas that we have because I believe in CTE. I opened one of the first comprehensive high schools, and I know how important that is for our students. And we want to be able to offer any opportunity that our students need in order to be successful when they leave us.
Okay. I think I had one more thing. Oh, some of the pictures that you have on your slides. It's really cheating to have cute kids on your slides when you're trying to buy us into a plan, but that was good. And just finally, I'm proud to be a JAG because once a JAG always
Ms. Jordan, do you do have anything?
Yes, I do, thank you. First of all, thank you very much for what you all do. But I do have a question regarding attendance, which I thought was, because I'm not from the educational background, so when I'm looking at an increase of staff attendance and staff and staff members being absent 10 or more days, that's a lot of days to me.
It is.
So what's the reason for that?
So
If you haven't talked.
We've spent a lot of time really looking at that data and really talking to our teachers. When we looked at attendance data for our goal this year, we had 30% of our teachers that missed 10 or more days. So that's the reason we really targeted that measure. We wanted to decrease that because we knew that our behavior referrals were reflective of that. We understand, and we needed to help our teachers understand that our children's best opportunity for success happens when they're in the classroom. And so we saw a major decrease in that number. We, I want to say it went to
It was 33 down to 18.
Yeah, 30 to 18% with our staff. And with that, we had paternity leaves, maternity leaves, you know, some hospital stays, those kinds of things. We have seen a great increase in our teacher attendance, and that will remain a focus. Because of our location, that is sometimes provides a barrier for our teachers. We have many teachers that drive from Cape Coral, from Northport, from, because they're committed to our kids, not because they have to, but because they want to. And so when you talk about making that kind of a drive, if a child is sick, or if I'm not feeling well, and I know I have to drive in the car for an hour to get to where I need to be, I have to believe and in conversation with our staff, sometimes that does impact their decision to be able to come or not that particular day. In saying that, I want to just say, our staff is aware. We've put some things in place. We do monthly
Incentives.
Incentives. We do ledgers. We do recognition for perfect attendance. We've done a lot of things, not only with our students, but with our staff, because we want them to know how important their attendance is and how much we appreciate the sacrifice, and I say sacrifice, that many of them are making to be a teacher at Eastly County High School.
Okay. I just know in my world
Yes.
If you miss 10 days
Yes.
We have an issue.
Yes.
You know, because it stops the production of whatever we're trying to do, as you're saying. It affects the students.
Correct. So It had to be a culture change.
Yeah.
It had to be a culture change.
So thank you for that. And then also, you may, you had stated, or someone up there had stated about how you had gone in and spoke with the teachers about how many can we, how many students that they can jump the bucket? How many more can jump the bucket? And so at that time, when you went in there and, you know, spoke about that, they said, oh, yeah, maybe we have five or six more. What about the kids that can't jump the bucket?
So
What's happening to those children?
What I will say is, we need to make sure that we provide an opportunity for all students to learn. And so when we identify those, there are goals for all students. So that was only just the part that aligns with being able to jump a bucket. But there's also, if I'm in a Level I, and sometimes it's hard to even get from a 1A to a 1B, that's a lot of points for kids, especially if English is not their first language, or they have specific learning disabilities. There are things, so we have to set goals for each individual child. That was one measure that we used to help teachers really know and understand and help communicate that with their students about the possibilities for them. So we always preface that we teach all of our kids the way that they need to be taught in order to be successful.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
It's, you've had a wonderful transformation, and I, in case people have missed the commonality between what you're presenting and what Manatee presented, it's the teamwork. And it's, I totally understand, having been a teacher for 38 years, that the more stressful your job is, the more mental health days you need to take. And as you've been, you know, making it easier for the teachers to teach and supporting discipline that really needs to be supported for the teachers, number one, they're feeling, I think, that it's pleasant to come to work. And secondly, it's just the camaraderie, when you feel like you have a team. And I particularly want to give kudos to all the principals that recognize team, that are on the team bus, because I think that's so important. The other thing that jumped out at me, the young man who spoke, I love that your talent was recognized because so often, kids just kind of go through the system, and for whatever reason, the teachers are just kind of, you know, whatever, it's too much trouble to say, hey, you need to test for this, or that you were recognized for your abilities. Didn't your school used to, or maybe you still do, have some kind of a talent recognition program with FGCU?
Yes, we still do.
You still, okay. And that might be something that you want to mention on that, because I was out at your school a few years ago for, I think it was a career fair, it was something for seniors. I was presenting a scholarship thing, and I came across the FGCU people. You might want to just mention how
That is a great program where we actually have a partnership with Florida Gulf Coast University. We have a staff member that is at our school almost every single day that meets with students. One of the things that we were able to do in addition to that, we have several different graduation-type programs that provide resources for students. So many times, when we talk about college with our students, they will very honestly say to me, Ms. Robery, I can't go to college. I don't have the money. No one in my family has ever been to college. I don't even know where to start. So one of the things, those resources, then the partnership with FGCU and destination graduation, and all of those things that we do are critical for our students. One of the things I'm really proud of from our data last year is we were able to, through support from the district, able to add a college and career specialist to our roster, to our student services staff. And she actually goes into classrooms and talks to students about, and I'm not just talking seniors, I'm talking freshmen, about what that journey has to look like for them and what's the expectation for them. And we, she hosts FAFSA nights. And the thing that I'm really proud of is last year, in our district, we had the highest increase of FAFSA applications of any school in our district. And that was because our kids understood the possibility. And if they, many times, it's just a parent saying, let me sit with you and show you how to complete this application. And our kids are eligible. They just have to fill out the paperwork. But once again, that's a barrier for some of our families. So if we can provide that extra bit of support that they need, they deserve it. They can do, our kids can do anything and everything any other child can do. Sometimes they just need different supports to make it happen. So thank you for that.
So thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I thank you for being absolutely honest about the things that you had to leave behind in order to accomplish your goals. And to piggyback off what Ms. Vaughn said, when you're trying to accomplish, or when you're trying to climb the cliff that you were trying to climb, given the amount of stress that that places on staff, having a plan and accepting that you can't do it all, you have to do what's really most important, is huge. And I'm sure that's a big part of your success. The only other comment I want to make, I was in an advisory, Board Advisory Committee meeting, I'm going to say a year ago, and one of the women came up to me and she said, I moved here maybe a year ago, and my, I can't remember if it was a boy or girl, my students have gone to Eastly, and they, you know, people said to me, oh, dear, you're going, you know, your child has to go to Eastly. And she said, you know, I go to the PTA meetings. And she said, there are wonderful things going on in that school, and there are no fam, nobody comes to the meetings. No families come. And that's the difference that I hear between Manatee and you all, is that they, their family involvement, which I think you can do with really young kids, is different than what you can do with high school level. But you're talking about also getting parents involved in FAFSA. So clearly, you're starting things going on in that school, and there are no fam, nobody comes to the meetings. No families come." And that's the difference that I hear between Manatee and you all, is that they, their family involvement, which I think you can do with really young kids, is different than what you can do with high school level. But you're talking about also getting parents involved in FAFSA. So, clearly, you're starting to make an effort to figure out how to get-
Absolutely.
-parents in your community. So, if you'd just talk a little bit about that.
Yes, yes. So, one of the things that I think we have to understand is that some of the barriers that our, that our parents have, and the best ways to communicate with them. And our parents can't necessarily come to school on a regular basis, but there are ways that we can communicate with them and provide information for them. And I think that it's important for us to help them understand about the resources that we offer. We, Dr. LaMester and I worked on the same grant. We worked very closely, actually, on getting the TESSA grant approved, and it was just, just approved, yay. So, we were able to add a parent involvement specialist. We're very excited about that. Having that resource to be able to focus specifically on parent communication and how we can do the same washers and dryers that Dr. LaMester talked about, we're very excited that we are going to be able to order two sets of washers and dryers. So, we are looking for ways now to be able to not only have our parents come to a SAC meeting for the sake of saying, "We have this many parents attending a SAC meeting," but making it meaningful for them. Helping to make their relationship with the school something that is good for them, and good for their family, and good for the student.
Ms. Gittens?
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
The one thing, I think about the first time I went to East to work, and I was like, "Okay, where is it?" And someone said, "Well, go almost as far as you can in Lehigh and turn left." So, and you'll be there. That, that was one of the issues, because so many students were bused from so far away.
That's correct.
And then we've got the other point of the teachers coming from so far away. So, it's almost like a remote, you know, location. One suggestion had been to have like some of those meetings in, in areas closer to where the parents and the children are.
We actually did that last year. We moved some of our SAC meetings to the hospital-
Okay.
-to see if attendance was better. It, it really didn't make a huge impact on the attendance piece. I think the communication piece, and the topics, and the things that we're covering in those are, that's what brings parents to us, when we can help them understand the benefit to their child.
Dr. Atkins, are you, are we going to see a lot more SIPs this year? Or is this all we're going to see, or?
Our, go ahead, Dr. Spiro.
Thank you. Thank you very much for asking that question. This is going to be an ongoing endeavor, and we're going to have representation from different zones, from different levels as well, from some schools that are higher-performing, some that have gone through challenging. So, we're trying to give you an opportunity to get a mix of all of the schools. So, if there is a school or two that you are personally interested in hearing from, if you'd please just reach out to me, and we can add them to the calendar as well.
And something that we want to do a little bit differently, because we have done this in the past, but this year, we also want to include some of our departments, and have them present their department improvement plans, and also show you some of department successes and, and challenges. So, it won't be just schools this year, but, but also departments, but predominantly schools, because that's our business.
I think the more access you can give us to the staff in the schools and in the building that we don't get to see at briefings and workshops is fantastic. I feel really, really, really bad for every school that comes after you two. Forget about it. I don't have any idea how anybody can, can even come close to replicating what you did here today. And what struck me the most is that you're not just talking the talk, you're walking the walk. Like, Ms. Robbery, when you were speaking, your entire team was shaking their head. The body language, it's not just about the words, it's not just about the plans, you guys are all in. And you can't fake that. You can't, you can't fake what you just did in front of us. So, I'm just so grateful that you're willing to do it, and that you're willing to travel, and that you have the, the passion and the energy, and I don't know how you do it, but I'm grateful that you do. Thank you so much for your time here today.
Before they, before they leave, just a couple of real quick things. First of all, just to give you an example, some of the things that we can do, that we were able to do at that school that, that I think helps, if you take a teacher, and I hope I get your name right, because you've changed your name, but Ms. Neil Guesby?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I knew it was Misty Neal, so.
[laughter]
I had an opportunity to visit her classroom. She's a PCT, so she's pushing into a classroom. I believe it was a biology classroom, but I got to sit back with the teacher and observe her teach. And so, she's in there as a PCT. The teacher is a, this is a teacher observing a master teacher. And it's kind of ironic, because I've heard her refer to herself as the Michael Jordan of teaching.
Let her say that. I wouldn't let her say that, and you did.
So, I'm watching this, and she's actually, it's interesting, she's giving lessons about the human genome, and of course, you know, you're talking about 23 pairs, chromosome pairs, and she's referring to Michael Jordan, which relates to what the kids really know. And in that lesson, I'm like thinking, talking to this teacher, it's like, wow, okay, I could do this if I were to go back in the classroom, steal this little snippet, and apply it to what I'd be doing. But it's an opportunity that we want to try to build in the teacher career ladder to get, to be able to take additional responsibility and spread incredible, exceptional teaching, instructional practice across the district, so that our new teachers, or teachers that, on a particular team, get the opportunity to see best practices in, in, live and in person, right, occurring right in front of them. So, that, that's something that I think is really cool, that we'd like to do, particularly with our Tier 3 schools. One of the things that you all talked a great deal about was, you know, attendance and some of the challenges that, that these schools face. I'm meeting regularly this year, we got our first meeting coming up with Tier 3 principals, because these principals have unique challenges. And I think we really, we have done some things in the past to address some compensation concerns, to try to, to improve upon that, but I think there's so much more work that we can do there, because there are some incredible challenges that make it, I think, in my opinion, more difficult to move like Eastley County has done than what you might see at another school. It's geographically isolated, it has many, many challenges with the student population, and honestly, I think that people have to work incredibly hard. But we should really recognize that, I think, in our compensation system. So, one of the things that we're, we're meeting with our Tier 3 principals, that's one thing we're going to talk about. In addition to that, in cabinet, yesterday, we were talking to Dr. Pruitt, and, and, well, and the rest of cabinet, and this is one of the issues that we believe, when it comes to teacher compensation, that we've done some things in the past, which is over and above what we've seen in some other districts, but I think there's so much more that we can do there, so it's going to be one of our real focuses. And I think that will help with, with attendance, because, you know, it is, you know, one of the things that makes it difficult is to get people all the way out there. It costs additional dollars, it's a long trek. I think, like I mentioned before, Ms. Robbery drives an hour, but there's other people that have at least that commute, a pretty sizable group of her staff, and, and every little thing, every little thing that we can do, I think, helps.
Well, you have our sincere gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so we're running really, really late. Could we, when we do SIPs in the future, a lot more time?
Yeah.
Because we, I want to hear everything they have to say, and I didn't cut them off this time, but I hate being late. All right, now, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone of the four people out there that work for the district that would like to? No? Next, we have board member comments. Ms. Jevonelli?
I actually don't have anything other than what Dr. Atkins just said. I was, that was a question I was going to ask you. Is there something that we can, some kind of incentive that we can, so I want to thank you so much for that, because that's really, really important to keep the people that I know, I know the demographics of how far people are coming from, in just Cape Coral to Lehigh, and that, even on a good day, traffic day, the time that it takes to get there. So, no, thank you for acknowledging that. I really appreciate that. Thank you. That's up.
Ms. Gittens?
I had two quick questions that I failed to ask this morning about the agenda. One, on the contract about fencing, is there a, and it kind of goes with the safety and security issue. I know we've talked before about James Stephens and the fencing around that school being totally unsafe. I mean, I have worked in one of those classrooms in the back, and the fence comes up to like my waist, and it's an open campus, and you, you know, get a call, a lockdown for security, and you're the only one with a group of kids on that back wall back there. Is there anything in the future for raising that fence, or securing that, especially that back area more than it is?
I believe so. Let me check and get back with you. I do know that we recently looked at that campus and the fencing specific to that campus. For actually, a little bit different reason, we were looking at trying to build that community incubator project, and one of the things that we, if we were to do that at the James Stephens campus, we would want to probably provide a separate entrance into that, and that means that you would have to make some adjustments to the fencing, so that's something we've just done. So, I'll provide that response to everybody. Should be able to do that by the update tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And the one other thing, on a lot of the policies, district was struck out and board was put in, and I was wondering about that, because in some instances, it was denoting that the board was responsible for staff and staffing-type things, so I wasn't sure about that.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, I think maybe perhaps even before we came on board, there was a debate regarding the nomenclature, the proper nomenclature, how to label the, the district, whether it's the school board, whether it's the district. So, we did some research, we had some lively debates with, with Staff Attorney Williams as well, and we kind of concluded that, you know, there is a statutory provision, and I can't remember it off the top of my head, but it's in 1001, that says that the, the proper name for, you know, for the district is School Board of Lee County. So, we, it's really, I think, I would say, kind of like a conservative approach. I think that there are some instances where it, where, you know, it could be improper to have the term district, but because we've, you know, we found that little provision, we just figured, you know, let's just play it safe, and, you know, and do it that way. I can't imagine that'll, that'll be a real substantive, you know, legal issue going forward, but we just wanted to make sure that we actually took a conservative approach on it, so.
And where are you in the process of looking at contracts and that basic contract?
The, the form agreements, is that what you, okay. So, so we spoke to, we spoke to procurement with regards to their form agreements. They do have form agreements. We were able to, we were able to find those, and we are reviewing them, but for the most part, I think that they're, you know, that they're, they're in good shape. We do have some revisions that we're, that we're working on. One of the other things that we're also working on is kind of the gap between what goes through procurement and what doesn't. So, so there are agreements that, that do need approval, but they don't have to go through procurement, because they're exempt for one reason or another. And so, I think that we're, you know, we're working with, you know, with, with procurement to kind of formalize something that might be able to use as a tool for things that are not going to go out to bid. So, I had a, I had a conversation last week with Ms. Linda Joe about it. I've spoken to Susan Millay about it, and we're kind of trying to pick up where, I guess there was a conversation about this maybe a year or two ago, and so, we're just trying to pick up where we left off. So, I'm looking, you know, trying to make sure that I have all the background before we move forward. But we do have a form agreement that we, that we think we can propose for that situation, but I need to make sure that I understand all of, like, where all the gaps were in the process of getting a contract approved, if it doesn't have to go through procurement. So, that's where we are now. I actually plan on moving forward a little bit with that this week, hopefully to coordinate a call, so we can tighten it up, and then maybe shoot something out for staff to look at.
Okay. And one last comment, the RSM draft was sent to everyone, and we're looking at on the 20th, during that particular workshop, to have them be here to answer any questions and to go through that to finalize it. So, I, it went out to everyone, did everyone receive it? Okay. And the Monday training, you all got the email about Monday, and Mr. Eady suggested having it, we were talking offsite, so he suggested to have it at the Black History Museum. They have two buildings, and the time was to do the training basically in the morning, and then after the training, we would have a tour of the facility and lunch. And I know Dr. Atkins was talking about the tour. You want to mention about that?
Well, if you, if you have an opportunity to do the tour, I highly recommend doing it with Mr. Eady. He has, he has that historical background perspective. What's really neat about the Black History Museum and having him give that tour is that it gives you that, that local context, that local history that just kind of brings it alive, so it's, it's really Lee County. And for me personally, it just, it just kind of made it more relevant and, and far more interesting and fascinating than if I were just, just to walk around and look at the museum by itself.
Okay. And yes, I'm providing lunch, so.
Ms. Jordan, are we, are you taking orders for lunch?
Oh, I know. This is not a restaurant.
I would just like to say, I really appreciate it, having the schools come out and do what they just did. I learned a lot today from just listening to them, and look forward to seeing many more schools.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, half of what I was going to say echoes what Ms. Jordan said. I actually enjoyed the presentations, and I'm looking forward to hearing from more schools. We have to do a better job of putting the timeframe on our agenda, because they have a lot to say, and rightly so. And anyway, looking forward to that. The other thing, I think I've asked that in an email, when, as a board, are we, maybe Ms. Gittens, maybe, you know, are going to address the attorney situation? We are down to less than two months before the current contract expires, and-
We did have that conversation, and-
Do we have a date?
Yes, we do. Hold on one second. I looked it up yesterday, and I believe it was-
It's the end of September.
-basically in, in October, because they were going, they were going to wait until the end of August to have at least a period of time to look at, to look at some type of an average, and the ups and downs and all of that, and then to get back to us either the end of this month or October. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, Ms. Gittens. We plan on having a proposal for the board at the end of this month. That was, that was, I believe-
That's what was in the minutes.
That puts us in a position, because when Mr. Bierman was here, he made it very clear that, you know, what we, what we budgeted for, excuse me, what we budgeted for was way under what he would have recommended, and, I mean, if we're waiting till their, till their contract expires, we still haven't made a decision. Are we going to stay with the firm? Are we going to look into getting one, a single board attorney in the way? I mean, that really, it just seems like an awful late date. It seems like we're, we're kicking the can down the road. We've done this on a couple other issues, and, I mean, even simple things like the advisory committees, and then hurry, hurry, rush, rush, and I just hate to wait until October.
Well, it's going to be sometime this month, and that would mean the next meeting, our next meeting after this one next Tuesday. So, the following-
I misunderstood that. I thought you said October.
No, it should be-
It's October.
Chair, Ms. Gittens.
Somebody said October.
Yeah, as far as, as far as, as far as my firm goes, I can't speak for, you know, anything else. I know that the plan was to have a proposal by, by the end of September, which I think would allow for, you know, a discussion by the board about what they intended to do if we get it by the end of September. And I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, but it does seem to me that we would prob, the discussion probably would happen in October. I think it's, you know, I think that Mr. Bearman is probably in a better position to ask, you know, to answer the questions that you might have with regards to how that process works. It's something that, that I think that he has insight on as well. So I would, I would definitely encourage that you, that you contact him if you've got any questions specifically about the timeframe of how.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, what I worry about is that we're putting ourselves over a barrel because, you know, when Robert Dotig left, we had basically no turnaround time to investigate this and we had to have board representation by a legal firm or, or an attorney. And so we went to the firm and I'm not, it's nothing against your firm, it's, it's a lot of money. It really is a lot of money. And, and so what I'm worrying about is that we're going to just keep extending a contract with a firm that's going to cost a lot and we still need to make the decision, what is it we want to do as a board? Do we want a single lawyer or do we want, I mean, there's, there's a lot of issues that we haven't addressed.
If I may, please, I have a couple of board members who want to jump in here. Do you mind if I?
I do not. I'm done. Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Ms. Jordan, thank you.
The only thing that I would add to that is the fact that it was October, but then also Ms. Pruitt, or Dr. Pruitt, has been waiting to get instructions from us and that has been ongoing for months.
That's what I'm saying.
I know that I personally had sent her my thoughts because she had asked us for that because until she has directions, she cannot put that out there on any kind of site or do anything. So come September, when we receive this information, we're going to be, she's going to be back in the same situation again, asking us.
I know, I know.
For directions.
I agree.
So that's on us.
I, I agree. That's why I'm asking about the dates.
Ms. Giovinelli.
Yeah, so thank you because I was, that was one of the things I was going to say. That was the last thing that Dr. Pruitt had said to us. So my question is, when does the contract actually expire? That's a date. You had that?
I think it's end of October.
Yeah, I believe it's October 31st, I believe.
Right. So I thought we were going to make a decision and, and have something in place or give direction to Dr. Pruitt before that. So there, that's what I was.
If.
Ms. Gittens.
If I may, rather than having all of us contact Mr. Bearman, if it's, everyone agrees, I'll just send him an email and ask him how soon and when they're going to present that. And then do you also at the same time want to have the discussion with HR and Dr. Pruitt about options going forward?
Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done with my comments, so we can just move it.
I have a question, Dr. Atkins, and maybe, maybe I'm out of the loop here a little bit, but for me, it would help to know when we're filling those two staff jobs because the allocation of the work to those staff jobs, to a certain extent, will dictate what work is left for the board, either attorney firm or board attorney. Because if it's a board attorney firm, well, I'm not going to go any further. I just think it would, it would help to know who's doing what so that we can focus on the position that's going to be reporting to us.
What I'll do is I'll provide you a timeline tomorrow, but my understanding with speaking with, with Staff Attorney Williams is that he intends to move forward very quickly with the first of those two staff attorney positions. So I look for that to be out there on the street real soon and then he will be making a hire, or we will be making a hiring decision. And then I think he wants to give it, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's six months with that one position and then really make a good determination what he would like to see out of the second one in terms of responsibilities and then he would put that out there. So I, but I will, I will make sure that's in alignment with his thinking and then provide you that information tomorrow.
Yeah, if you don't, but what Ms. Morgan said, it meshes because what we were sent, there are two administrative assistants in the office right now and when I asked for further clarification, it said, Lauren or whoever sent back the information, said that those two ladies would probably have to have their jobs reclassified. So one of them works directly with staff legal and the other with board legal, so it's all intertwined. I mean, it's, we have separate, but it's intertwined with staff. So my, my feeling is, I know I said I was done, but my feeling is we need to get this show on the road with what we're doing with legal.
Sorry.
But I'm just going to say, going into that September, October meeting with the law firm, whenever that occurs, I plan to on my own, complete the attorney evaluation instrument, not for public consumption, but to help me sort of narrow my focus with regard to that conversation. I'm just throwing that out to everybody. Ms. Morgan.
No, I have no more comments.
No comments.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, state priorities for our legislative platform? Personal injury protection? I can't advocate for that because I don't have any idea what I'm talking about. So if you could give me enough information that I need to go out and really be the district's cheerleader on that, I would really appreciate it.
Okay.
I don't know if it's talking points, I don't know if it's personal stories, I don't know what it is. Maybe I'll just read the statutes, but cases would add some color, right? So whatever you need, whatever you can give me that will allow me to go out and advocate. That's one thing. The other thing is the board did agree to executive session on safety and security and we still haven't had that executive session. And the more I read about the vulnerability of school districts with regard to technology, the more concerned I get that we haven't had that conversation yet. So if we could schedule that, that'd be great. And those are my comments. I believe, Dr. Atkins.
The only comment I would have is, I know that I had a request from Ms. Giovinelli regarding some information that was relative to the audit and it was the Gibson audit. So just wanted to let her know and the rest of you all know, I'll be providing that information. It just was a general question about what are, you know, what have, you know, some of the changes that we have made as a result of the Gibson audit. So that's, I will be providing that to the board tomorrow. Other than that, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Attorney Saunders.
Just, just real quickly, I wanted to address the, the question that came up in the workshop. I didn't want to take any time during the workshop because I know we were trying to keep it moving with regards to communication. So I think, I want to make sure first of all that each of you knows that, you know, if you do have a question, you know, of, of us, you, you can come to us individually. I think that there are a few situations sometimes where, you know, having, having a board consensus or, or a majority vote may be something that, that the school board attorney requires, whether it's me or anybody else. And so I think that when those situations arise, you know, that, that you would definitely be notified. I think that the third sort of, you know, kind of track with regards to communication, at least from our office and the way that I think that we try to operate, is that if there's something that we think is really important for all of you to know, regardless of whether or not we were, you know, asked, you know, we try and, we try and let you know. So I just wanted to, you know, to put that, you know, put that out there. Obviously, if you have any questions, you can certainly, you know, ask me offline. That's all.
Great. Okay, please. Attorney Williams.
Sorry. Sorry, I heard your comments in my office and I just want to give you a quick update. So as far as the legal services department is going, we are currently advertising that coordinator position for the Office of Civil Rights. That is on, being advertised as we speak. It was approved by the board at the last board meeting. We're getting quite a few applications for that and we'll be going through that interview process, I believe, at the closing of that, which is in another week or so. As far as the attorney position that Dr. Atkins referenced, he is correct. We're actually, one of the things we were in the process of doing was working with HR to get salaries from the various agencies around the county as well as local municipalities to determine salary ranges. And I think you've got some documentation on that recently and I was just looking at information this morning on that as well. I would like to advertise the first attorney position as early as October and I only given myself that time because we have to get the job description to the board for approval. I did review two job descriptions for two different staff attorney positions, which again, has been given back to HR and it's just a matter of getting those positions in front of the board for approval. And again, as soon as we do, I would like to hire someone because I know we need it right now. So as soon as we can get that to you for approval of the actual position, we will put that out for advertisement and hopefully we will get some good candidates to interview for that particular position. I will note that there are quite a few positions that are currently being advertised for school board attorneys across the state. I did go to the School Board Attorney Conference about a couple of weeks ago in Delray Beach and I believe the general counsel for this Orange County, which is Orlando, recently resigned, so that position is being advertised. I believe Broward County is looking for an assistant school board attorney as well. So there's a couple of positions out there, I think Duval, to name a few. And so we're going to be competing with a lot of, you know, if we bring someone externally, different agencies out there that are currently looking. That being said, I think we have some good talent here in Lee County. And, and again, one of the reasons I'm looking at some of the different municipalities is also, again, I hate to say it, but if there's someone interested in coming over from another municipal agency that has sunshine law experience or other experience that'll be, allow them to get, you know, start here already having basic knowledge of some of those areas, that would be a great thing. And again, it's a matter of looking at who's out there and identifying the talent. I've been speaking to several bar associations to identify some of the talent within their particular groups and that includes the Isaac Anderson Bar Association, which is the black lawyers here in town. They just actually recently started the Hispanic Law Association and I know one of the ladies that put that together and I've reached out to her as well for recommendations. But again, our goal is to put this stuff out there, make people aware that we're offering a good opportunity here and getting again, someone on board as quickly as possible. With respect to the school board attorney's position, yes, we do work with that office and I think that is the intent. I do think there will be some areas that we will definitely be able to, I'll say assume or take on once we have a, more people in place to handle the various legal issues. So I think it will allow some scaling back in terms of that role. So how the board chooses to move forward with that particular role, I think can, will be determined based on what, again, we can assume.
You, you mentioned local, local talent, that, but that doesn't preclude advertising nationally, does it? That we're just going to search?
Not at all. And, and just so you know, I did, I did make HR aware that I wanted that. So for example, that coordinator position is on, I believe, at a minimum LinkedIn. So it is, hence why we're getting so many resumes and we did get resumes the first time we had it out from a variety of people from a variety of places. I'm not excluding that at all. I mean, I think the goal is to get the best person we can get here, whether that be he or she, so. And, and again, we want, you know, this is, this is a great opportunity to build a really good legal department and I don't want to miss that opportunity and I want to make sure we get the right person.
Please, please, please consider including in their negotiation experience. I really think that it's critical to us and protecting the district and saving the district money to have someone who does have a focus on negotiation.
Understood. All right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's moved. Meetings adjourned.